So it's a couple meetings, electronic meeting. Mr. Frazier?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Parrish? And I'm here as well, Christine Smith. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Ms. Donahue to lead us in the pledge today.
Thank you. You'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, and I also ask Mr. Frazier to lead us in our moment of silence.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'd like to just take a moment. You're now no longer immune to this disease that they have, one confirmed individual in rapturous count. Just be a matter of time as the testing progresses, but we'll find more, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you. If everyone could be seated, please. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Are there any addendum items?
Yes, sir. There's one item that was added after the agenda was originally published on Wednesday, and it's H1 reconsideration of the ordinance, emergency ordinance.
I gotta go back to that page. Sorry. I can't get used to going back and forth between the two pages. I think I'm okay with that. That's the only addendum item I'll move that we adopt the agenda as provided.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And do I have a second?
Chair Whitson, I'll second to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. We'll do this roll call so that all the votes are on the record. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Sorry. She's unmuted.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also, Christine Smith. That takes us to the small report. Looks like we don't have one attached to the agenda at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Curry?
That is correct. And just to be clear, the board policy includes the layout of your agenda, and it's understood that not all items will be essential. Those that are just reports are being retained for the public's benefit to see those reports and for historical sense so that if we can go back and review those reports in any time we want to in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And then also for public comments, the next item on the agenda, D1. Do we have any public comments submitted via any of the means that people may contact us?
There was no public comment submitted by telephone or by email to my office. We can attempt to entertain public comment through Zoom if those that are interested, raise a proverbial hand.
Very good. So we're on Agenda Item D1, public comment, and anyone who has joined us via Zoom on this platform up in the right-hand corner where there's three dots and it says "more," there is an option to raise your hand. So if you would like to raise your hand, Mr. Curry, can I identify your device and you can be recognized by the chair for public comment at this time?
I have one raised hand. It's Mr. Glennie. He's been unmuted.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Glennie.
Hey, it's Glennie, Jackson District. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address regarding the Walker Jones invoices relating to the Bragg One case. The Walker Jones invoice before you today has a line item, and I quote, "review and revise key talking points," unquote, dated 13 March 2020. Talking points for what? Note, Mr. Goff approved the invoice on 27 March 2020. Maybe he knows what it's for. Were the talking points for the Rapoos interview of Mr. Goff and Mr. Luke for the story that was published on 19 March 2020, the article that misrepresented Judge Parker's letter opinion and insulted Ms. Bragg's attorney? Mr. Goff stated, "It's important for the public to know that we actually substantially prevail," that's a quote, "in that if that is true, why did Judge Parker order a hearing on Ms. Bragg's attorney fees when that can only happen if she substantially prevailed?" Our coach, Goff, also stated, quote, "My clients, the board of supervisors, didn't do anything wrong, and their reputations have suffered from this litigation when they did nothing, nothing," unquote. Did he not read the part of Judge Parker's letter opinion where he listed the topics of discussion in the closed session that were required to be discussed in open session? Did he not read the judge's letter opinion where he ruled that the board members falsely certified that no, not exempt topics were discussed in closed sessions? And if Art is correct, why did Judge Parker place a 10-year injunction on the board? Then near the end, Mr. Goff made an inappropriate comment about Mr. Conick. Perhaps Mike Brown should have reviewed and revised Mr. Goff's talking points. Do taxpayers have to pay for speech writers for the legal defense team that lost? For some 40 years ago, when all this started, the board was offered the opportunity to just admit they made the very same mistakes Judge Parker has now ruled on and avoided this whole thing. Only Mr. Frazier took that opportunity, and this board has penalized him for that. It was Peter Luke's bad little advice that cost the county taxpayers over $100,000 in legal fees, plus whatever the judge allows for Ms. Bragg's legal fees. As revealed in court just a few months before, Luke had provided advice on the same subject, stating general hiring decisions must be discussed in public. So what was it they don't want the public to know? Now the 2021 county budget process, pressure and commissioner review are not getting timely legal advice from Mr. Goff. There have been occasions when even the board did not get timely legal advice from Mr. Goff. Furthermore, Mr. Goff has requested the county attorney salary be raised 20%, and he wants litigation removed from this county attorney duties. In last week's budget board session, this board refused to remove that raise from the budget. Bottom line, Mr. Goff had badly liped by his husband in town a significant amount, and he is not performing his duties. He wants his duties decreased, and he wants a significant raise. Mr. Goff, total compensation, Commonwealth attorney is $190,000, $115,000 plus $60,000, $160,000 in benefits. That makes him the highest compensated county attorney, and he often doesn't even work a full week. Meanwhile, the savings that pay that compensation are losing their jobs. Mr. Goff does not have a contract that specifies his duties, board's expectations, and his performance standards, just a resolution making the county attorney. He is not held accountable. Also, last week, board members praised Mr. Goff's work on the emergency ordinance that the day he must revise. That same ordinance that has no means of being monitored or enforced. Would any business tolerate such an employee? On a related manner, today, the fourth time, Mr. Parrish will be the lone defendant in the Bragg One case voting to pay his legal bills. I guess that's a sign of intent. No longer being one of the members, he no longer falls under that provision of the code. It would appear that he has committed violations of the Compensation Facts for over $19,000. However, a Commonwealth attorney who should be investigating the matter is conflicted out. It is well past time for new county attorney, and no, Mr. Parrish, the judge did not permit the board hiring a new county attorney. It is also well past time for Mr. Parrish to accrue himself voting on the Bragg One legal defense bills. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glennie.
Chair Smith, there are no other hands raised, and I'll just bring to your attention, if you didn't see on the screen, Mr. Parrish has joined us, and his microphone is unmuted.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. I'm here.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for joining us, and I would just say one more time for anyone that might wish to speak on this electronic platform up in the upper right-hand corner, there are three dots where it says "more." And if you choose the raise hand option, you can pick that option in the drop-down, and Mr. Curry will identify your device, and you can be brought into the meeting. Just normal rules, fine, aim, district, and if you keep it to less than five minutes. Does anyone else wish to speak? Very good. No one else has their hand, Mr. Curry?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ron Frazier here. Yes, I was wondering if we could, on the consent agenda, if we could set aside the accounts payable and have a question or two about that so we could vote on that separately.
Okay. So the way that we approach this consent agenda, if any board member has been misgiving about any of the items on the consent agenda, we then automatically pull that item out. So we'll pull out the accounts payable process. Is there any other, are there any other concerns regarding any other items on this agenda?
Just to be clear, I'm assuming if there's a board member who has self-muted themselves and wants to be unmuted, they will raise their hand to drop to my agenda.
So basically, it looks like, and please correct me if I'm not saying this right, Mr. Curry, we have no minutes for adoption, and we have no supplemental appropriations.
That is, that is not, sorry, that's not accurate. There is an item under supplemental appropriations.
Oh, okay.
An attachment. There is also one item on the contingency list related to refund due to Truist Bank, which was BBNT, due to a statewide action, and there's information attached for that.
Very good. I see that attached to that. So we would be, in approaching the consent agenda, in approving the consent item, we would be approving the supplemental appropriation, item three and item four, the board supervisor's contingency budget process. Do I have a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda?
So moved, of Ron Frazier.
And do I have a second?
I'll second. Debbie Donahue.
Thank you, Debbie. For purposes of discussion, I just want to identify everyone around the table to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Okay. Did you have any other comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Donahue?
I'm good with the accounts payable, just based on the conversations I had with Mr. Curry earlier in the week, unless Mr. Frazier brings up something I didn't think about, which is possible.
Okay. Mr. Whitson?
I too have discussed both with Trevor and Mr. Curry some questions I had embedded within the accounts payable, check runs both mid-month and end month. Separately, I've reviewed item four in particular, which relates to BBNT tax adjustment that has a locality impact, so I believe I'm satisfied on both fronts. But look forward to further discussion of accounts payable if we pull that out.
Okay.
To be clear, the accounts payable has already been pulled out at the request of one board member.
Correct.
So this is, this is just for the discussion on items E3 and E4. Mr. Parrish, did you have anything on those items?
No, but I don't know how y'all are doing, but I'm not hitting, my voice is breaking up a lot, so most sentences, I don't hear the whole thing. So that's just, maybe it's just a matter of my own personal, my home internet setup. Anyway, I'm listening the best I can, but Mr. Glennie was talking, I only heard half of what he said. I couldn't tell if he mentioned my name or not. But staying with these comments, I can hardly, every sentence, I'm missing part of.
Mr. Curry, are there any opportunity possibilities for this Zoom platform, anything to do to help or that you see on your end?
No, I would suspect that it's bandwidth on Mr. Parrish's end. His audio is being received by me fairly well. If there's any other internet devices where he is, he could turn them off.
Yeah, there's nothing else here other than my phone, which I don't think gets internet. Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear over here. Yeah, that's good. If you just heard what you said, fine, but there's a whole lot that's been breaking. Anyway, I'll pay attention to it the best I can. I'll turn them on. Oh, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I don't have anything to add for either of these two agenda items, E3 and E4, that we have a motion to approve currently on the table. So with that being said, I think we have a clear path forward, and I'll just call for a roll call vote to clearly identify how everyone votes on this topic. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. And that takes us back to the accounts payable process, item E2. Mr. Frazier, it sounds like you wanted to pull that out. Would you want to discuss that for a reason or?
Yeah, there's, the account, the check run that Mr. Glennie mentioned, it's a check for Walker Jones. I'm not sure how would that fall under something that's imperative that we do that could cause irreparable harm to the county if we didn't pass it.
My conversation with the county, again, this is Gary, with the county attorney, was that the accounts payable and your duties to meet the state law relative to prompt payment would fall into that because if we, there are certain remedies that would be offered by vendors if we didn't meet those state codes for all of your AP. But while I have the floor, if you're going to approve the AP, you should read the declaration, which I have attached as an item to this agenda.
While we're there, I'm not going to read that because it's just applicable to me. It hasn't been since, I guess, March of 2019. I've just been reading it for no real reason.
I'm wondering, to move this agenda along, Mr. Frazier, would it be agreeable if we pull that invoice out and do the rest with the accounts payable process and then have separate vote, pay that invoice?
No, we can go ahead and vote for it, but I'm not going to read that declaration. I just wondered why, that and a few of these others in here, how that would be applicable, that they were emergency, you know, level that they had risen to the level of emergency funding.
Madam Chair, this, if I may.
Give it to Whitson.
We're a county that has certain fiscal responsibilities, including paying our payables on time. If there's a concern about a particular bill in this case, I suggest that we pay it. If there's a question about what's embedded within that bill, that can be taken up with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to argue or belabor the point here, but I mean, if we pay it, then it's not much more that we can discuss or argue about. It's all we pay. The thing is, this is a bill that this board of supervisors is paying, and we have not talked to one of our attorneys out of the three of them. Have they addressed the board if they saw fit to have an article in the newspaper? That's one of my biggest beefs. Who are they working for? And if the people that they're working for is not the board, then who are they working for?
Madam Chair, this is Chair Whitson. Again, I would emphasize, we pay the bills. If there's some question about whether invoice from a particular vendor, Walker Jones in this case, might not be accurate, we can address that separately.
Okay. Well, I think, I think it would be appropriate this time for everyone, and please correct me if there's something additional we need to do, Mr. Curry. I think at this point, if everyone has any comment, we could go around and have that comment timed now. And also, it would be appropriate for any supervisors that need to do so, also make a point, disclosure statement attached to the agenda today as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And with that, Mr. Frazier, I'm sorry, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't have any more to say.
Ms. Donahue?
I assume, yes. I don't have anything else to add, but I will read them. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-315.8. As a board of supervisors' member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the name of firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual, as a member of the board of supervisors, I must say. I certify that my involvement in action in as a group of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115.8, as a board of supervisors' member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the name of firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Did you have any comments to add or in addition to that exposure? Very good. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read it. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115.8, as a board of supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the name of firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a board of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And I'll make the declaration. I don't have any further comment beyond the declaration. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3115.8, as a board of supervisors' member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the name of firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? Very good. Then I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Smith, Mr.?
Oh, I see. I saw him end up.
Yeah, hold on one second. Trying to multitask.
I apologize. This is Chair Whitson. I was simply saying, please unmute me. That's all.
Did you have comments or?
No, no, I just wanted to, I just wanted to do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Because you're cautious for the, I apologize. Sometimes this technology drops out. Mr. Frazier?
I'm staying.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I abstain as well.
Supervisor Smith, could you refresh for me who moved and who seconded?
Oh, gosh. Should we not get that? Should we not get that?
Well, I didn't get it.
Did we have a motion?
Don't believe so. I forgot.
Do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable?
I'll make that motion. This is Kier Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahay, or do I have a second to approve the accounts payable?
I'll second it.
Thank you both. I apologize. Mr. Frazier?
Abstain.
Ms. Donahay?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Do I abstain? Thank you. And I apologize for selling past the motions. That takes us to the next item on the agenda. H1, Old Business, the agenda item that consider revised emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes in response to COVID-19. I believe this was requested by Mr. Whitson or Ms. Donahay. If y'all would care to leave the discussion on this agenda item, or Mr. Curry can introduce it.
Yes, ma'am. I was contacted by both of the supervisors you referenced after, I think, they heard from some individuals in the short-term rental industry. The original language passed by the board earlier this week referenced advertising, which apparently is difficult for these entities to turn on and off. So the revised language removes reference to the advertising.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Whitson or Ms. Donahay, did you have anything to add to this agenda item?
I would just like to say that, first of all, they caught me off guard, and I'm embarrassed for that because even though they, the B and Bs and Tourists can't have people stay with us while we're in emergency, they can, and we all hope to have quite a tourism rebound after the emergency. And to do that, you need to be allowed to take reservations, even if you take them today in a timeframe that ends up being still an extended emergency. I hope it doesn't happen. Any business can call back to that customer and say, "Sorry, we're going to have to delay it again." But with this situation, they can plan for July, August, September, October, and hope to rebound their business as quickly as possible after the emergency is complete. So I think this is hopefully an easy change for everyone and made to sound separate right now.
Thank you, Ms. Donahay. Mr. Whitson, I know you had requested consult, and do you have anything to add?
That is the primary adjustment to the language. And I just want to acknowledge Theresa Wood, on behalf of businesses of Rappahannock County. Her business is of Rappahannock. She served as a good advocate for her tourist homeowner members and pointed that out to us that, as written in pass, it would be somewhat limited. But I do want to bring everyone's attention to an additional adjustment to the draft to capture some of the discussion that I led during our budget meeting last Thursday. And that is the final line in the revised version. And this goes to the idea of protecting the right of residents of Rappahannock County to still rent on a short-term basis, logic should they need it to accommodate extended family members who are coming home. So that's now been added to the end of this provision of the emergency ordinance. And again, that addition came out of our discussion on Thursday. So obviously, it could be written in on the spot. But I just wanted to bring everyone's attention that that has been added, and we're now about to vote on it with that addition to allow residents to still use short-term rentals for their purposes for extended family work.
It looks like that was captured on the first round. Isn't that was in the last sentence? Nothing here until prohibit the residents' Rappahannock County renting rooms to accommodate extended family member visits?
Yes, ma'am. That was one of the pen and ink changes that was made on the first version by Mr. Goff at your board's request.
Very good. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't making additional changes that...
No, it's been formalized, and it's here now.
Very good. Just to go around, if there's any comment here on this agenda item. Mr. Frazier?
I just wondered, is Mr. Goff, is he on here with us?
Mr. Goff has court action that he's involved in. He told me he was available to be connected by telephone if necessary.
Okay, I just wondered if we make any changes to this before we adopt it, if we have to run that past him?
I've already run this by Mr. Goff. I should have said that, sorry.
Well, I thought you had, but I was just also commenting that in case somebody listening wanted to, had wondered about that as well. So that way, we can make this happen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Did you have anything additional on that?
I do not. I think it's been touched enough.
Very good. Ms. Donahay, I know you introduced this, but did you have anything else to add in light of the discussion?
No, I think this takes care of all the concerns that I was hearing anyway.
Very good. Mr. Whitson, did you have anything further to add?
No, I think it was a good team effort over the weekend, and I think it's been perfected. And again, I want to thank Mr. Goff for leading the charge on drafting his emergency ordinance and all my fellow board members for their input.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Did you have anything?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I don't have anything either, except to say, you know, it was clearly an oversight, going to mind, you should probably pick that from another locality. That definitely was not a good thing in retrospect, and I'm glad to come back, circle back and correct it so quickly. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve agenda item H1, that consider revised emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes in response to COVID-19. Do I have a motion?
I'd happily make that motion.
Ms. Donahay, do you have a second?
Kier Whitson, I'll make it a second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. So now I'll call for the vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahay?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also, Christine Smith. I believe that takes us to the past item I, New Business. If I'm missing anything, Mr. Curry, please let me know. I have a schedule today. And takes us to item J, the information reports and correspondence.
Yes, ma'am. The reports are there for public consumption. We'll add, we'll just flow through them that there is a written report from the Planning Commission Chair. The Treasurers reports are, you let me know, Mr. Chair, if you want me to handle this differently.
No, please do. I appreciate your commentary.
All of the, sorry?
I was just going to say, that report from the Planning Commission Chair, that doesn't come out online. It says something like Winfield, and that doesn't print. I cannot access it online.
Well, it's very short, and it essentially identifies that the current local emergency, state emergency, impacted their ability to get work done as supported by the governor's executive orders.
Okay. Thank you.
The Treasurers reports are standard, and board members in public can review them as desired. Everything looks good right now. As we noted, I noted in the past, we're watching very closely the Children's Services Act budget. And I'll probably come to the board in May for some fixes for that. The legal matters is updated. In lieu of providing an oral report, I put together a short county administrator report, just bullets for the public and the board to consume when they have time. The building permit report and zoning administrator report are attached, as is the VDOT monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And correct, you said something, mentioned something the other day about VDOT and their normal six-year plan. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. In years past and anticipated this year would be preliminary discussion about the secondary six-year plan for FY 2021 to 2026. Because it was, this stage did appear to me to be essential business, I shared that information with the board in advance of a public hearing that will be held in May. That public hearing, I believe, is essential to keep on the schedule with VDOT. And if board members have any questions, please let me know. I'll need to advertise that public hearing in the next week or so. And I'll do it in a way that provides plenty of information to the community so they can make their feeling known on matters related to the secondary six-year plan.
Hmm. I guess that makes me wonder why we're having some public hearings and not others.
Well, if I hear from VDOT that we don't need to have it done to program the money, then we'll put it off. But if it risks our money being programmed, then it's certainly critical.
Understood to be a compelling public interest. Thank you, Mr. Curry, for leading us through those reports. Did anyone have any questions on any of those report items?
This is Kier Whitson. Only very, very, very briefly in the context of the Treasury report. Early in the year, I believe it was our second meeting, we did give the go-ahead to set aside funds to paint this Perryville Tower. And I realize that now that lacks the import it did previously. But I just wonder where we ended up on cost and where we are now, given all that's going on in terms of the actual painting of the tower. I don't, I assume Mr. Curry is the best person to answer that.
We've paid half, the AP you just approved included the first half of that cost, which is approximately $19,000 and some odd dollars. They are planning on starting next week.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, and I saw an AP, but where are we? So it's exactly, so it's 19 is the total amount?
What you see in the AP is half.
Is half of the total amount, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item K1, matters presented by the board. You know, we keep things brief, but I also know that there's a lot going on right now. And so I thought maybe once around the table, so to speak, would be appropriate in case folks had something to report that which other board members might not be aware. Mr. Frazier, did you have anything for matters presented by the board?
Well, I guess just the idea of the banners that we installed. I don't know if Amisville, or Jackson District, rather, has very few entrances to the park down here. So I think I'd count them all on one hand. And I just wondered what the, perhaps you and Mr. Whitson, would want to do in that vein, that we install smaller ones or no more necessary now that the park is shut down? Or where do we go from here with that?
That's a good question. I think we allocated $2,000 originally for signs?
Yes, I believe that's correct. And as installed, the four-by-eight banner with the treated lumber frame is just under $200.
Okay, and we have two of those in place so far. So we still have about $1,600 available?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay. And do we have any other signs being made at this time?
I haven't ordered. I was going to order them after today, if that's what the board wished to do. I just ordered the two because they just did get them out before 5:00 on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I know you said, mentioned they can only deliver two on Friday.
No, I can probably get the next couple ones, you know, middle of the week. I get them out Saturday or tomorrow. But I could only get those two probably. I didn't press for any more than that.
Well, let's see. Let's see where everyone's feedback is on this as we go around the table. Because I know some of the other supervisors have thoughts about signage needed for their districts as well. Ms. Donahay, did you have any thoughts? Do you feel like there was signage, further signage needed in our district?
Thank you. I am concerned about Chester Gap. I drove around this weekend and did not see any traffic. But as this continues to affect so many people, I'm worried that they will be looking for outdoor adventures. So it may be best to put one up at Chester Gap. I also know, and I know Mr. Whitson has more info than information than I do, but I know of at least one road that I'm thinking may need a no park access sign, hopefully by VDOT or somewhere. Somebody, I don't know that it requires a banner, but as we close certain sites, others are becoming potentially popular.
Ron Frazier again. So you want me to look and get any sign up there on Chester Gap?
I think one up on Chester Gap would not be a bad idea.
Is there park access, Ms. Donahay, on that Hillsboro? I forgot. We rode horses up there years ago, but I can't remember. It was actually public access.
There's a main, the main road that goes up through Chester Gap pretty much ends at a park access.
Mr. Whitson? Did you have?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just want to say, I've said it probably already. I want to commend Mr. Frazier and those who assisted him to get those signs up. They're fantastic signs. I think they're a significant deterrent. They were done with the taxpayers in mind. They're keeping costs low. They look great. I just want to really applaud the efforts of Mr. Frazier and those who assisted him to get those up before the weekend hit. I know most of us on the board were out just trying to get a sense of traffic in the county compared to the prior two weekends. And at least my observation suggests that Mr. Frazier signs, post sign 211, and at Massey's Corner, plus the help of the Chatham National Park and VDOT really, really pushed people away from Rappahannock County. So for that, I'm grateful. Just to add on to what Ms. Donahay mentioned, there are some roads in the Flintville-Humbee area that if you look at a park map, suggests that maybe they get close to the park boundary. And I heard from two citizens this weekend that they had people they'd never seen before parking along the roads, looking probably to get into the park. I would suggest in those cases that we try to address that with VDOT. And I'm willing to continue to work with Sheriff Smith, Ms. Donahay, and also with VDOT to see if we can identify those additional roads that might be enticing to hikers still trying to get into the lower park boundary. I think that's probably the best way to address that. So perhaps one of Mr. Frazier's framed banners at Chester Gap. And the one I would add, Mr. Frazier, I heard from a constituent who suggested the rest of the road as you're approaching Point Hill because a lot of traffic, people looking for recreation are coming about the aircraft still road because it's so picturesque. So maybe if we have the money, maybe I can add one there as well. And finally, yeah, and finally, I just want to mention that all 12, there, I mentioned last week, there are 11 trailheads in Rappahannock County that lead into the National Park. There are 12. There are two that remain a problem. One would be, they're all closed now. They're all noticed with National Park signs. They were applicable. They're also posted with VDOT signs saying no through traffic. But Buck Hollow and Pass Mountain Trailheads, both of which have significant parking areas, were still seeing traffic this weekend. And someone actually cut down ribbon that had been placed across the trailhead at Buck Hollow. So I'm going to continue to, with the mandate provided to me last week by board vote, I'll continue to work with protesters, just be able to do this kind of nice people for crowding those areas. Finally, I received an author of assistance from a constituent who has GIS for Bill, Ms. Ennis, and she roots assist with mapping Wi-Fi hotspots. Ennis, and she would assist with mapping Wi-Fi hotspots and other essential services in the county if that would be helpful. I've spoken with Mr. Curry about it, so I just wanted to mention my appreciation for her reaching out, and that I would put Ms. Ennis in direct touch with Mr. Curry to see how she might assess. She's actually employed in Fauquier County as a GIS analyst, and I really appreciate her offer, especially her police services. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish, did you have anything to add this afternoon?
Yeah, I, I, given the fact that, you know, meantime, the governor's issued a stay-at-home order, and the fact that we have signs up now that the main entrances, you know, I take it most of these people are coming out of DC, and the roads coming in from there are covered now, I question the fact that we would need any more signs and less, that we have continued problems, but I would think that what we have in place will take care of it.
If I could, if I could, Ron Fraser here?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to George D. at VDOT on, I think it was Friday morning, and he said that they were out of signs, had been out of signs, and he had recommended to Sheriff Compton that, you know, worst-case scenario, if we get a little no parking sign, because when I rode up into the Hollow on Thursday afternoon, I went up to Old Hollow, and there were, there was one car at that time parked between the road and the river, right there where Old School Road is. So there, you know, there's still coming out parking, and if there's no parking signs, I don't know that they could actually re-ticket it, if there's, you know, no parking signs. And VDOT, George told me they were cleaned out.
Yeah.
They pretty much cleaned out when Madison shut down roads to their sites, White Oak Canyon and Old Rad. So all we really had is what was left over, and it wasn't much.
Yeah, this is Kier Whitson. Mr. Fraser, I really appreciate you bringing that up. I forgot to mention it. As part of this plan to close off access to the National Park through three areas, three trailhead center actually not at the terminus of the road, and for those three locations, I had requested last week through Sheriff Compton and Mr. Lee to get no parking signs for those three locations, one of which you passed on your way to Old School Road, it said Piney Branch, one is on Woodward Road, it means a mountain trailhead, and I've, and one at the Harris Hollow Trailhead, which is in my district. So I'm eager to get those signs in place, and I guess the question here is, while I appreciate that you're putting these banners together at very low cost, I really think we do need VDOT signs in those particular locations, so that it opens up the ability of the sheriff to issue failure to obey highway, highway signs, tickets. So I wonder if we need to enlist the help of Mr. Nesbit, perhaps get VDOT to order additional signs. I mean, I feel like we're scrambling here, and I think we've done a good job of protecting our citizens, but just a few more signs, as you just explained, I think would make a big difference.
Right. Well, Culpeper used to have their own sign shop. I don't know if that's still operational. Maybe it's a chance we can get them if we did contact Mr. Nesbit.
I guess I would just say, I think we do definitely need a sign at Chester Gap. I think we do need a sign on 647. I think we do need a sign on 522 for Culpeper, so that would put us, I believe that's all the larger signs we probably need, which puts us at three additional signs at a cost of two hundred dollars each, which will leave us a thousand dollars still to work with if there are additional signs needed. Perhaps even a smaller trailhead to close down this road, telling and force sign at the end of Woodward Road or Old Hollow Road might be a, be a help. If we're not able to get help from VDOT, and I think the way we allocated that money, we have some flexibility as to how we spend it, if I understand correctly.
This is Kier Whitson, so I would just ask, I mean, is it, I do think, I agree with you, so the three additional sites for Mr. Fraser signs, sounds perfect to me, and then the second part of this is getting no park...
I'm sorry, I'm lost.
Mr. Fraser, in fact, oops, sorry, can you hear me now?
I can.
Hello?
Yes, you're there.
Okay, so I do think we're gonna need VDOT help, I know parking signs in the light to allow for enforcement, and I agree with the three additional, of all the Fraser signs, Mr. Fraser signs that you proposed, is they're excellent, perfect for 522, 647, and Chester Gap mandates to the county. But we definitely need to figure out how to compel Mr. Nesbit to help us here.
I'll contact him as soon as we adjourn this meeting, or at least I'll attempt to.
Okay, that's great.
And I'm buzzed.
This is Kier, I just wanna, I don't know what everybody can see, but you do have VDOT personnel listening into this meeting right now.
Okay.
Karen Smith?
Yes, Miss Donnahey.
Mr. Fraser, if you don't mind though, one on 647, I don't know if you're thinking right there at 522, I assume that would probably be on DBNT's property, but I don't think a large one there would, the ones you've been getting would look very good there, they would definitely stand out, but a slightly smaller one might work just as well.
I think you're right, thank you for pointing that out. I thought maybe four-by-fives or something like that, instead of four-by-eight, or even three-by-five, the size of a flag.
All right, and I also did have a call buzz in from the park hall shortly after we convened this meeting, and so I'm calling the back and trying to work through enforcement and anything we can all do to work together to keep the trailhead marked clearly and and only have the access that's allowed at this time.
Yeah, and Ms. Smith, this is Kier Whitson, when you do talk to the park, I would only emphasize, again, we had asked for perhaps blocking off completely the parking areas at Buck Hollow and up at Pass Mountain Trailhead, so if you could reiterate that on our behalf, that would be great.
I sure will. I have it noted on my paper, and I will take it up with them, and I'll reiterate to them also the challenges that we continue to have at Piney Brook, Hazel Mountain, and at the Harris Hollow trailheads, people continuing to park and needing some help, possibly down there if they're available.
And to clarify, it's Hazel River.
River, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so I think that there's a way forward for all of those items, and this is a matter presented by the board, and I think we're all working on a consensus here, and the way is pretty clear for the signage, and if there's details we need to follow up on each other, I think we are all capable of doing that. I did, I did wanna just check in about a few things. We have been having a, they are calling it, I think, a community preparedness call on Sundays, and he's been sitting in on that call, more as, I think, on the business side, and Mr. Curry's been sitting in on that call as well, on the listening side, and I have been sitting in on that call and reporting on board actions. And if it's agreeable to the other board members, I'd be happy to continue to monitor that board and, or monitor that call and supply any information or help make connections that may arise on those calls as well. And that is a weekly call on Sundays at two. And speaking to Kevin Williams the other day, I was contemplating calling a public safety committee meeting, but it sounds like there will be a call involving, that will be our key call, and if it's agreeable to folks, I think Mr. Fraser and I should sit in on that call, as he has the most experience with fire and rescue and is the vice chair of the public safety committee, and I'm the chair of the public safety committee, and that way there will be a board member on there at all times in some redundancy in those calls as well, should anything need to be reported to the board. So those are some communication items I just, that I kind of followed in the practice that I wanted to let everyone know.
Supervisor Smith, you mentioned to me an expenditure that you thought you may want to discuss on this call.
I did, I did yesterday. Thank you for reminding me, Gary. I mentioned it yesterday on the, on the community preparedness call. I've heard several different occasions that Food Pantry is having trouble meeting some of the protein demands that folks need in the county, in particular, I think ones that was chicken, and then more recently it's beef. So we do have it on our budget a lot, for the Food Pantry, for the hunters, for the hungry, which we can disperse, I think there's fifteen hundred dollars left in it, and I would suggest we disperse all of that last, the last maybe hundred fifteen dollars, so a hundred fifty dollars, so maybe disperse one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and that would help the Food Pantry either secure some additional food or enable them to take animal slaughter if there was something that they wanted to do for the people that they're serving currently.
Yes, is that, I'm sorry, is that noted to Ms. Smith, when I spoke with her or discussed this with her, that it's already appropriated, already budgeted for Food Pantry, and so the consensus of the board would be fine, and I don't think a motion would be needed?
So, Ms. Smith, you said you were gonna leave in three hundred dollars at least into the, first of all...
If we, if we think they need...
It's not the...
I'm so sorry, Mr. Parrish, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, first of all, it's got nothing to do with Hunters for the Hungry. This is a, this is a separate, peculiar to Rappahannock County, where we pay the processer fifty dollars to process the deer and take it to the Food Pantry, and it's popular for the hunters that have excess deer that still wanna, still wanna hunt, but they don't have meat for the meat. And then I know that I have a kill permit for deer on my farm, and I have hunters that intend to bring deer still out of season over there to be processed for the Food Pantry, so, you know, there's gotta be some money for it to pay the call to process it.
Okay, if it's agreeable to F1, then we'll leave the three hundred in, and we will...
Yeah, that's only six deer, that's only gonna be six deer, yeah.
Yeah. And you're, it's not a, it's not a true Hunters for the Hungry program, it is our public...
It's always got nothing to do with Hunters for the Hungry, nothing to do with strictly Rappahannock County, its own little, its own little idea that we had a long time ago to, we looked into Hunters for the Hungry, but they have a lot of restrictions, a lot of rules and regulations, so this, this way, we just give man for, call fifty dollars and he delivers it to the Food Pantry.
Well, I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Parrish, or Mr. Fraser, I'm sorry.
No problem. I just wondered, are there gonna be any, are we using a kill permit between now and June 30th, because there's really no crops grown, is it?
Yes. I got a permit to kill a hundred deer on my farm, and I personally shot two of them lately, but I gave them away to people who could use them themselves, but I have a list of hunters that can, they're not really hunters, they're just killers, that can come on the farm here, and if they, telling me they're, they're gonna take them to man for call, so they're just gonna do it for sport, they don't need the meat, and they're telling me they're gonna take the man for call to, to give them to the Food Pantry.
Right, I was just thinking, we're gonna be...
Yes, and honestly, this, this part is good up until the first day of, the day before the first day of your season, so it's good until September.
No, but what I was thinking, I didn't say it yet, but what I was getting at, unless we bring down... But June, June 30th, this budget ends, and we, unless we cut that line item out completely, we'll be replenishing that amount of riding ahead of here.
I hear you, I hear you, like...
So I think, so...
Basically, the question is, will you, will you kill six deer between now and June 30th, is what you're saying?
So this is, this is Gary. Obviously, the board could revisit this at any time between now and June 30th. If you pay a thousand dollars to the Food Pantry today, leaving three hundred dollars, and the end of June comes along, you could decide to pay whatever's left.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, that would be good.
All right, so I think there's a consensus to go ahead with the thousand today, and then we'll first the additional monies, if they're still available and not used for their original accounting purposes, at a later date. We will work with the signage increase as discussed, and resolve any details that may need still to be addressed in one-on-one discussions. And Mr. Whitson and Mr. Fraser, I'm actually, sorry, Mr. Fraser, I think we'll follow up with VDOT, and I will follow up with the folks at the park. And I, I think that's everything in terms of discussion items. If anyone has anything else at this time, just let me know.
Karen Smith, if I could?
Yes, Miss Donnahey.
I would be terribly remiss if I didn't publicly thank the work that did us, is related to provide the county EMS and other key businesses with hand sanitizer. They have donated over probably six or seven gallons already, and continue to make sure that Rappahannock is first in their mind before they go outside of Rappahannock to donate.
That's wonderful. Thank you for giving that, Miss Donnahey. Does anyone have any additional discussion items? All right, I believe that takes us to adjournment. If I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved, Ron Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miss Donnahey. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Kier, do you have a mute up?
I, I was just trying to get someone's attention, and I muted, that was all, so...
Okay, very good.
I apologize, I'm still, I'm trying to be cautious with mutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kier. I think we, are we adjourned, Mr. Curry?
Yes, ma'am, 3:06 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You all have a nice afternoon.